Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. Today, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reason. Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Public Employees Union, Local two seven two, Leona, all bargaining units. Because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body that the chair so declares, and it do. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Ope?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, we're now gonna go into executive session and we'll come grab you guys when it's back in open session. We are now back in open session from executive session. I'm gonna move on to agenda item two. This is open session minutes from August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four and August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Without entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
A motion made.
I second them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item three. This is a request for a one-day wine and malt liquor license by Profile Tavern on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, from six to nine P M. And when all the proper paperwork has been?
Yes.
Filed? Perfect.
Except for like outside?
It's an outside tent. There's some gentleman here from there, so.
Yeah. How we doing?
Gentlemen, welcome.
Do you want us to come up there?
As long as you can just pull one of those microphones over so we can hear you. You don't have to. Thank you. Just state your names.
Yeah, just say who you are and.
Jay Lanigan, Profile Tavern. Yeah, so on the twenty-fifth, from six to nine, we were hoping to put a tent up in the parking lot in front of the building to accommodate a number of extra patrons, approximately fifty, that would be attending Jesse Saint-Jelet political fundraiser. He's a local guy that's running for state rep. And he asked to to hold that function here in Free Town. So we're trying to accommodate that. So because that service would extend beyond the description in our license, we're here seeking a one-day permit to, you know, extend our footprint a bit for that short period of time.
Perfect.
Makes sense to me. The only issue is parking, is parking. You're not worried about parking based on, you know, limited size of the parking lot? The only thing I worry about is accessibility for these guys and fire trucks and stuff, so.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose parking, you know, could be, you know, somewhat of a concern. Yeah, so it's, you know, we'll make sure that, you know, the fire lane is clear and we'll we'll have staff on site that will, you know, address that if it becomes an issue.
Perfect. Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, so that's my only concern.
I understand totally.
On the same line as Selectmen Zager, you have the fundraiser all in front of the building. Will the restaurant still be open for patrons that are just there? They just wanna have some Philly cheese steaks?
No.
You know, some little hot egg rolls?
I mean, it'll be closed to the public for a short period of time, for two or three hours, or two hours, really. It's a ticketed event. And we do expect that, you know, the reason we're asking for the tent is that we do expect that he'll he'll bring more than what our our normal capacity is. So we don't wanna put too many people in the building. We'd rather, you know, accommodate for those people outside of the building. Again, it's for a couple of hours, but. And then we'll be back open, so you can get Philly cheese.
Well, we're just saying, those egg rolls are pretty darn good.
Yeah, they are pretty good.
Everyone gets a chance to eat some. So.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yep.
The A B C C, when I did check with them, they did say that it would, it could be beer and wine only in the tent. And I think you'd, you had said beer only was gonna be served out there, so.
Okay. Interesting. That's weird, right?
Was that their specification or was that what we applied for?
I think that was their specification. I reached out to them to say, you already had a liquor license inside that was full alcohol. If you're gonna do the tent outside, could I issue a license? And they said beer and wine only.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, it's just kind of random, isn't it, like?
Yeah.
It's random.
You can have lots of wine, but not a cocktail?
You would think that it would be an extension of what the license is, but.
That's what I assumed, but I'd never done it, so I called them.
We're we're not, you know, we're we're not picky.
Just for clarification, can we kinda call back and say, hey, if they go, if it's closed indoors, right? Well, I'm assuming your bathrooms are open for people to go use?
No, 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 it'll be, it'll be open. So so we're going to be serving food inside, but not outside. So outside is really overflow, so that we're not, you know, putting too many people in the building. So there will be people inside that will be able to utilize the existing liquor license. But the folks that are outside will will only be able to access, it will most likely be beer in the tent. And we'll we'll make sure that Jesse and his staff know that clearly. And then our staff will be aware of that and will make sure that they understand that clearly as well.
Okay.
Can I just get one clarification?
Absolutely, you just need to state.
General manager? That's for sale outside, correct? Or is that outside in general period?
I just asked for the tent. I can call back and clarify.
Well, there won't be any alcohol, like any liquor sold outside, only beer. And it's, that's it. So if it's a sales thing, which it could possibly be.
I can call them and ask.
Okay.
I mean, I would think that we can make our vote based on A B C C's recommendation, right? So that way, if we get clarification that says that you can go outside with hard alcohol or whatever.
I just wanna make sure so we can follow it to the T, so that we're doing everything that we need to do.
And that's where the line of my question was going. I go into the bathroom, I go inside to eat, to grab something, I grab a cocktail in a plastic cup, I go outside. All right?
I don't see.
I want you guys getting, right, I don't see that being an issue, but also don't want you getting jammed up. You guys have done a fantastic job for the community. I don't wanna see any of that kinda fall on you. So it'll be up to us to make sure that we help you get to the point that we're all on the same page, right? So if that can happen, great. If not, well, now we know, now we know the rules. Makes sense?
Yep.
All right, so ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
So so I should add some language, I think, related to this? I mean, I guess, I think we're just voting on approving the license and then I think you guys can clean up that specific. All right, so without, I would say a motion to approve the request for one-day wine and malt liquor license by Profile Tavern on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, from six to nine P M.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Agenda item four. This is discussion of vote whether approve exclusive use of Hathaway Park on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for a trunk or treat event facilitated by Piping Systems. This sounds cool. Maybe I'll bring my son.
I think they did it last year.
Yeah, they did it last year.
We have someone from Piping Systems here.
Oh, hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, why don't you put your name for, say your name for the record, please?
Stacy Gagney.
And.
Can I give her the microphone?
Yeah. I guess anyone have any questions about this trunk or treat event?
Well, it's more a question for us. Are we getting a town vehicle involved? Like, are we?
You could.
Are we, are we bringing it this year? Maybe a police cruiser out there, a trailer? What's going on, chief? You're right there.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Way to put you on the spot, huh, chief?
Not a problem. And I'm just saying, you know, we, you know, we love public events. I also like to see our our folks getting involved as well, so we'll see.
Yeah, and they can come decorate their work trucks and leave them with candy, too, so.
Perfect.
And you have a shiny new dump truck.
Perfect.
Is this the second year or?
Yeah, second year.
You know, it was successful last year?
Yeah, we had a lot of kids come last year, it was great.
Awesome. I mean, I don't know, anyone have any questions or concerns or?
No, and I did forward it to Kylie, you know, the community program director, so she's aware that it's going out. I don't know if she'll reach out, I don't know, but nobody has any concerns at this point.
Awesome, I think it sounds like a cool event. And so it's gonna go, what, from four to six is the plan?
Yep.
All right. Perfect.
Good stuff. Thank you for doing this for the community.
Yeah, no problem. We love being involved.
Did you guys do this last year, was it at F E S?
It was at the same park.
Same place?
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out, I was trying to look through many minutes when we did it last time. I wasn't sure, but if it worked out, fantastic.
Yeah, but it was great.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the exclusive use of Hathaway Park on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for a trunk or treat event facilitated by Piping Systems.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. I'll be looking for the police cars.
All right. So should I come back to the special?
I'm not sure if you, I'm not sure what they're here for. That the warrant's gonna be a few minutes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you might be able to almost.
And then, and then we also, we have this at seven, right?
Yeah. You might be, we might wanna do that after that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, so.
Skip five and six?
We'll skip five and six and come back to the warrant stuff and then we'll keep it moving and then we'll we'll have the hearing at seven and then. All right. So I'm gonna jump down to agenda item seven. This is, I should, sorry, this is discussion of vote whether to close the transfer station on nine seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four, from eight P M to one P M for training?
Eight A M?
So eight, what I said, cheese. Been a long, couple days.
So overtime.
Eight A M to one P M for training.
I did receive an email from the trainer today and saying, asking me, when do I wanna set this up? And I sent him back the email saying, we have it set up for this date, so it may move the date. But hopefully he'll get back to me tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, both Ricky and Tom wanna go to it and it's the only way to get that.
Is it like OSHA-related training, like safety?
It is, it's heavy equipment, oysters and yard safety kinda thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Well, let's go the best date we have now and then changes to changes. So without, I would say a motion to close the transfer station on nine seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four, eight A M to one P M for training.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And and real quick, we should probably make sure, and I know we do good about it, but just posting it so that way we.
Yeah.
Get it out to the public.
As you know, people get upset when the dump's not open when they think it's gonna be open. All right. Agenda item eight, so this is discussion of vote whether to approve the V F W using town seal on coin presented to veterans, which sounds awesome.
Yeah, this request came from, you know, Bruce Wilber. He said, I think he came across a coin that was presented to a veteran that, you know, said the town of Free Town on one side. And I don't remember where he came across it, but he would like to start doing that again. So he was wondering, I said, you just have to get permission to use the town seal. You know, I may come back in and ask for funding from the selectmen, their donation account. Basically, I'm gonna get more details from him about what this is gonna cost, what program. But it's really for the town or Free Town residents that are veterans that are coming back. So, you know, something that I think, you know, it's a win-win, right? We wanna, we wanna show respect for our, for our veterans.
Yeah, that's, I think that sounds awesome.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and so does Cheryl have to, do we get Cheryl's?
I didn't ask Cheryl, I will put it to her, I mean, the selectmen control the town seal.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I guess just as a passive courtesy, do we ask her? But I mean, I don't, how do we not do this, right? It's our veterans.
Yeah, yeah, makes a lot of sense.
As a veteran, going through multiple events, right, throughout this country and our, and our great, great planet of ours, challenge coins is what this is gonna turn into, is a significant thing for many veterans. It 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 provides context, it provides humility, it means so much to them. At times, you you go to an event and they will throw the coin down. The person with the highest coin gets a free drink or a free handshake or a high-five, chest bump, whatever it is. It means so much to them. For us to be able to put our town seal that we control as selectmen on a coin to give out to our veterans here in Free Town, I I I couldn't be more proud as a veteran. That that sounds amazing. I want one, I wanna see it approved.
I know, I was gonna.
I want it in my pocket, I'll carry it wherever I go.
Maybe we can have some kind of an event when we get them.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Veterans that haven't received one.
All right, great.
You'll be hearing more about this as I move forward.
Fantastic.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the V F W using the town seal on coins presented to veterans.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, agenda item nine. This is discussion of vote whether to add cameras to the town hall highways and upgrade cameras at the highway department.
So this is to install cameras at the town hall hallways, right? Because for security, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years. We just, this is the next phase. We got, we got the new alarm systems put in and now we're looking to do it to town hall hallways. So it would be the doors, so coming in, there would be exterior cameras that pick you up in all three doors, the two front doors and the back door. And then the hallways, so if there's an event going on at the hall, in the hallways, it's not gonna go into anybody's office, or the bathrooms or anything like that, just the hallways. And we're going to try to connect them into the police station. So if we call the nine-one-one, they can basically look up and see what's going on in the hallway to determine what they're gonna do. So that's one piece of it, sort of just continuing our security protocol. The highways cameras, there's three that are working there now, that they're just not working well. And Comcast has them, they're not, they're not continuing their camera program. So if they need repairs, they won't come out and repair them. And they pay as, they charge as a monthly fee. So these cameras that we're gonna install won't have any monthly fees attached to them and they're much better clarity. And so they're just really on the highway, they're replacing them and maybe adding one. I think there's actually four cameras, but one hasn't worked. So I think we're looking to replace that fourth one and keep it working. So this is really security measures that that we've been working on.
Makes sense to me. Any questions or concerns?
No, no, Deb, Deb said it right. So this is, for those here sitting here today and those sitting at home, you know, two, two ways of looking at it. Oh, adding cameras to keep an eye on employees. Sure, it's an added benefit, of course, something happens, we're there to see it, right? However, in today's world, we need to know what's going on, right? We started with the school vestibule project at F E S, right? We paid for the portion of the vestibule to get it going, to make sure it was protected, because we owned the building. We were updating the transfer station. We added the security parameters to the doors with the key fob beside town hall. And this is to protect everybody. It's an open, open area, right? This is open to the public, which means if you, any woman here or at home goes to a town hall with a camera and they're recording, you're allowed to, all right? Just like we're allowed to. Now, like she said, we're not going into people's offices. We don't wanna see that. We wanna see who's there, what happens. So that way, when policing fire respond, now we have additional evidence to support whatever's going on. This just makes sense. So I can see both sides, but this is just moving forward.
Yep.
All right?
Makes sense to me. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to add cameras to the town hall hallways and upgrade the cameras to the highway department.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, agenda item ten, discussion of vote whether approve M O A between the town of Free Town and UMass Dartmouth College of Nursing and Health Services for influenza and COVID-nineteen vex vaccination clinic services effective eight-ten, two thousand and twenty-four through eight-ten, two thousand and twenty-six. So this is before, right?
This is for the interns, yeah, that come and help with the, help, and they learn, you know, and they learn. And they work with a public health nurse, nurse Lori Dismars, and they help her out.
Yep.
And they learn, and it's a, it's a win-win sort of for everybody.
Perfect.
And we don't pay, we don't, we don't pay them.
Sounds, I love, love the sound of that.
It's free and we get better trained nurses and doctors. Fantastic.
Awesome.
Yeah, and she, and Lori has been happy with how it's all worked, right? So it's a win-win.
This is, this is the second year, I think, this one's a three-year contract, but this isn't the first time we've done this.
Yeah.
All right, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the M O A between town of Free Town and UMass Dartmouth College of Nursing and Health Services for influenza and COVID-nineteen vaccination clinic services effective eight-ten, two thousand and twenty-four through eight-ten, two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we have.
Hold on, Luanne?
Yep.
Are you doing?
We're not electronics.
Oh, we're not electronic anymore.
For executive session.
Never mind. I digress.
Perfect.
Yep, so agenda item eleven, this is the purchasing process. Supplies and service policy. Hung up there for a second. So this is just as in general, clarify our process and procedures.
Written policies and procedures, so we've been working on them, you know, Carlton Abbott's been working on them. We have distributed them to department heads, taken comments, distributed them to town council and gotten them back. And this is basically what you're seeing. So these are not the first time that the employees or the department heads are seeing them. And now we're just formalizing them and we have so many of them, I figure we kinda do a few at a time. And we can always change them, but we need to start somewhere. And that, this is what I'm, I'm working with Carlton to try to get this done a few at a time.
Okay.
So these are the ones that got completed and through all of those.
So I probably can do one motion, right, to.
The next four, right?
We can talk about all of them, yeah. So there's the purchasing process, supplies and services policy, then there's the conflict of interest policy, motor fuel, sorry, motor vehicle record review policy, and constant aging board policies and procedures.
Right. Yeah. If I may, Mr. Chairman, so one of the things yet people have to realize is we are a small town, right? We love being a small town, but essentially, we're also a small business in a sense, right? Services are coming in, services are going out, right? So our policy and procedures at some, at some point haven't been touched in some decades, right? The good old saying, this is how it used to do for the last fifty years, is a great saying. But we're in two thousand and twenty-four, mass general laws, state laws, federal laws have changed. Now we have to keep up with those. So this is our way, this isn't the first time. This is multiple policies we have changed and updated, right, for the benefit of the people of Free Town, right? And our employees over the past three years. And we're gonna continue doing so until every one of them are done. But if it takes three years, five years, or ten years, we're gonna do it, all right? And these are common sense. This isn't where we're trying to jam somebody or get something out of somebody else. These are to protect our taxpayers, our residents.
Yep. All right, any other questions or concerns?
No, I mean, I've seen them in the first drafts and all that and stuff. And this, they're pretty in-depth and straightforward.
This is what Carlton loves. He's a procedure, he's a procedure man.
So.
Yeah, it's common sense stuff. You wanna drive a town vehicle, you have to have a battle license.
Who would've thought?
Who would've thought?
So, yeah, no, no questions or anything.
Okay, so I'm just doing one motion for all these, so. I'll entertain a motion to approve the process and procedures mentioned in agenda items eleven through fourteen.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Saved a lot of words there. Okay, we're gonna skip agenda item fifteen. We're not ready for that today yet, which was just some spending plan for ARPA monies. So moving down to agenda item sixteen, this is discussion and vote whether approve the M O A between the town of Free Town and Public Employees Union, Local two seven two, Leona. And Deb, do you wanna just explain this one so I don't butcher it, but I know it's.
So this is just the union M O A agreeing to the increasing the position of the clerk at the fire station, that it doesn't have any adverse impacts to the clerical union. So it's really as basic as that. It's not any, it's not agreeing to anything else and that the current clerk, who cannot work full-time, will resign upon hiring of the full-time clerk.
Yeah, we're just going from a part-time to a full-time position. All right. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the M O A between town of Free Town and Public Employees Union, Local two seven two, Leona.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item seventeen, this is discussion of vote whether approve the disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract for the community program director slash slash outreach worker. And this is just because this individual holds two positions now in town.
Two part-time positions.
Two part-time positions, so this is just a kind of a mandatory.
Procedure.
Yeah. I think we're all aware of this one. Any questions or concerns?
No, I I I will give credit to the community program director for submitting disclosure agreement, right? It's a proper thing to do and it's just, anybody has questions, they're free to ask our town clerk for it. It's common sense.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract for the community program director slash outreach worker.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So agenda item eighteen, this is whether to approve the senior work-off list for two thousand and twenty-five. I feel like we got this one a lot earlier than last year.
Yeah.
Right, wasn't there a bit of an issue with that?
This one's great. This one went to a town meeting. We increased that to fifteen hundred dollars, right? And now we have, I think we have more people than we had in previous years. And they're doing things around town from clerical to day-to-day work environment. It's.
Documents?
Yeah, it's, this is helping the town out quite a bit and saving us some, some money in the process. So good on them and tell your friends. Let's go, we need more.
Perfect. All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the senior work-off list for two thousand and twenty-five.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item nineteen, discussion of vote whether approve the change order and agreement between the town of Free Town and River Hawk Environmental.
We have a contract with River Hawk Environmental, they test the dump, our, you know, our closed dump. But the D E P is now requiring us to test for the PFAS, the PFASs that are in the water. And so it's, it's a requirement, we have to do it. So this agreement, they, since they're already out there doing, they have test pits and they're doing test pits on the dump. And they also do test pits surrounding the dump, that it would just be them, it makes sense for them to do the work. They're exempt from thirty B procurement law because they're engineering firm, so, you know.
How, how often, so annually it's twenty, about twenty-three thousand?
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-four thousand?
In addition to, we already pay them like twenty-three thousand dollars to do testing on the dump. So this is now is gonna be about a fifty thousand dollar a year annual bill to have that closed dump, the required testing, and we're not sure what the ramifications will be when the tests come back.
So the tester, and the, the interesting part is, and I've read up on this, is that what they're testing for is basically in everything.
Everything, yeah.
So, um, how they, this, these guidelines came out, but no one really knows how it's gonna affect anyone and what it's gonna cause us, so to Debbie's point is, we have testing wells around the facility, right? Based on exposure from it, so they, they, these gentlemen are already out there testing it, now they're gonna test for this other stuff, we don't know what's gonna come of it. So it's, it's actually quite scary.
Right.
It is, it is.
You're absolutely right, ultimately, this is a double-edged sword, right? One, we have to protect our aquifers and our water and our environment, our animals and everything else. However, if things aren't going right, there's potentially more money down the road to fix or mitigate any hazards we do identi- identify, right? However, I'd rather drink safe water with my children and everything else than spend a couple bucks and know about it versus not knowing about it, and then down the road, I grow a third arm, right? It, it, it might be, it may be funny, but same time, it's a serious matter, so for twenty-three thousand and change, whatever it is, um, we, we don't know, we don't, well, we don't know, and this is.
It's a requirement.
No, and this is a requirement to get us to that point, so.
Yeah, we don't much of a choice, alright.
Yeah.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the change order and agreement between town of Freetown and River Hawk Environmental.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, agenda item twenty, this is, um, agreement between the town of Freetown and Kimberly Fails as department assistant effective nine, ten, twenty twenty-four through just, uh, twelve, eighteen, twenty twenty-four, so this is, um, Kim's gonna come in and help town accountant out through, for some ti- some time here, which is awesome.
Minimal five, I think up to ten hours a week, or it's very minimal, but it does help.
Yeah.
Uh, you're in crunch and.
Yeah, she has a ton of knowledge, so.
Yes.
That's great.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
No. No, this is, this is, this is great on, on Ms. Fails coming in, she used to, she used to hold a position, and we hired an individual that is new to municipal world, and this was the carry-on plan to make sure it was being done correctly into the, the standards she left, into the standards of the town, so this is actually helps our town for ten hours a week, all day.
Perfect.
Smart money.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to agree the, uh, improvement between town of Freetown and Kimberly Fails as department assistant effective nine, ten, twenty twenty-four through twelve, eighteen, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda item twenty-one, discussion and vote whether declare eight automated external defibrillators, AEDs, as surplus and authorize the police department to put them on propertyroom.com for auction. Chief, are you here to discuss this?
I can, but they're, they're so old and outdated that, um, looking to dispose of them, but, uh, possibly maybe, uh, getting some compensation back to the town. If somebody's interested on, uh, you know, uh, propertyroom.com, maybe they can buy them and refurbish them or whatnot. But, uh, this is the best avenue to get rid of these, uh, defibrillators, I think they're like twenty years old.
Yeah.
Pretty old.
Chief, uh, I have a question, if, um, Chief, yearly, you, or periodically, you, you all do sustainment training on your tasers, right?
Correct.
Are we still doing tasers training on officers from time to time to make sure they know how to, how, how it feels and everything else? Similar to when they first get permitted?
Part of the, the standard with the state is that we have to have mandatory annual training with our, uh, electronic-controlled weapons. So, uh, this year, the, uh, brand-new tasers were implemented after their training, so they got the new and updated Taser tens this year that, uh, the town had purchased, so, uh, that training was recently completed within the last month.
Did anyone get to taze YouTube?
Well, my second question, so thank you.
Chose not to go for the electric ride.
So, so my segue to my question is this. Those, those defibrillators as a AED, uh, trainer, we can a- adjust the voltage, right, on some of them? Any way we can use them for training?
Uh, I, I don't know.
Alright.
I don't think we can adjust.
Just checking, Chief, Chief Harry, is this, I, you know, try and save some money at the same time, get some good training in the process.
Looking to get rid of old equipment.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get it on you, yeah.
Obey it.
Alright.
Like.
So you just, I guess you'll just take a try, so if, if it's surplus, right, if they don't sell, we'll just, you can dispose them, whatever.
They can easily go in the trash, but there are batteries involved, and there's some older, uh, defibrillator pads that are old and expired, really expired, but, uh, this is some way of getting some value ba- back to the town.
Okay.
Whatever it might be, I can't even say for sure what it would be.
We appreciate your effort.
Thank you, Chief Rose, thank you, Chief Harry.
Alright, so with that, so I'll entertain a motion to declare the automated, um, external defibrillators as surplus and authorize the police department to put them on propertyroom.com for auction.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess it's my turn.
Yep, you have.
I have an easy day today.
You have two minutes before the, uh, hearing.
Oh, let's do it, item agenda twenty-two, acknowledge the resignation of Marion Reynolds, effective eight twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Marion, thank you for your service to the town of Freetown, and item agenda twenty-three, acknowledge the resignation of Kylie Battalio as recorded clerk, effective nine twenty, twenty-four, Kylie, thank you, keep doing what you're doing.
Alright.
I'm gonna hold on even starting to, to read anything, by the time I start, it's gonna be time for it, so I'm just gonna ask that we take a two-minute break going on.
Yeah.
I don't even, we don't, I don't.
I'm gonna, I'll run to bathroom real quick.
Perfect.
So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, go to recess momentarily.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to do a motion to get back into open session or come back from recess?
I would do one, but you know, I don't think you do, but.
Let's just do it to be safe. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to go to return from recess.
My motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're now back in open session. Alright, so right next we have a, um, a public hearing that we've continued, I'm just gonna read the, the, um, hearing notice once again. So, uh, town of Freetown, public notice, notice hereby given that a hearing will be held on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at the police station, community room fifteen Memorial Jive, East Freetown, Mass, at seven PM to review the class-two motor vehicle license held by Chopperhead Industries, Inc., DBA Chopperhead Custom Cycles, Thirteenth County Road, East Freetown, Massachusetts, oh-two-seven-one-two. Um, so yes, as I mentioned, this was continued from eight-nine, twenty twenty-four to today, which is nine-nine, twenty twenty-four. Um, and I guess I'll entertain a motion to open, open the public hearing.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you, I, so we have some representatives from Chopperhead.
Sure.
Want to just, uh, state your name for the record?
My, my name is Richard Bennett, and I'm an attorney from New Bedford, Massachusetts, and I represent Chopperhead Industries, Inc., and Joshua Gagnon.
Okay.
Welcome.
Yep, and Chief, I'm, I'm assuming you have some, don't you have something to, uh, show here related to this?
Yes, I do have some, uh, some videos and some, uh, posts that are, uh, made by, uh, Chopperhead Custom Cycles regarding the activity that's going on at that location.
And let's just talk about why we're here in the first place, right? So obviously we have some complaints, I know, I read a couple of police reports, there's been, you know, wheelies going on and, and, you know, some parties taking place at the facilities, which has led to complaints, and that's really why we're here now, right? Um, and I know, Chief, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, if you have anything else you want to add specifically on complaints you've, you've received? Um, and, you know, maybe expand a little bit on the police reports, I, I did take a look at those, so.
Sure, so I, I'd like to stop by saying that I'm here to, you know, representing the department to go over the most, you know, recent activities that the police department has responded to, uh, the Chopperhead Custom Cycles, uh, business at Thirteenth County Road. Um, there's been a number of complaints over the years, um, in that general location, some are directly connected to the business, some, um, are in question, uh, it's hard to say if a motorcycle came specifically from that location. But there are some specific, you know, evidence, especially from witnesses, um, in the neighborhood that I've seen more, uh, particular things that have been happening in that general location. Um, I'd like to focus in on this, this past year of, of the activity, even though there are other complaints that go back years ago, um, I, again, like to focus on what we've been dealing with this year. And this year's complaint started in May of, of this year, where there was a report of, um, erratic um, activity at the Chopperhead, uh, business area. Um, at the time, uh, it was identified that officers were tied up with, uh, an arrest, and there was a late response due to the, uh, the activities the officers were dealing with. However, they did respond out to that location and did notice that, uh, there was a number of motorcycles at the Chopperhead business. Um, but rain kicked in and later dispersed the, uh, the riders from that location. Um, however, there were, um, you know, a report came in on that time from a specific known witness who identified themselves to the police department, I'm not sure if Rodney Rodericks is here today? So the second, uh, complaint came in on, in June, where it was reported that, uh, erratic operation of a motorcycle or motorcycles were driving on county road doing wheelies. Again, this call here was not specifically directed at the location of Chopperheads, but it was in the, in the vicinity, o- o- officers had responded to the area, and they did see some type of ongoing activity at that location where there was a number of motorcycles and bikes. The next call came in on July eleventh of this year, in July eleventh, uh, it was reported, uh, by an unknown caller, didn't want to identify themselves, that there were people with motorcycles in the front of the business spinning their tires, causing a ruckus. Uh, officers responded, uh, officers spoke to the owner, Mr. Gagnon, and the response was that he was gonna tell them to knock it off, and the disturbance, I guess, was quelled at that time. And then finally, the most recent incident was August first, where officers responded to that general area for a, uh, a large gathering of, uh, motorcycles in that general area. Um, the officers were scattered, uh, throughout the area. Uh, at some point in time, the officers observed, uh, a motorcycle, uh, operator operating erratically in the area, which led to a motor vehicle pursuit in the city of New Bedford. During that pursuit, a, uh, a number of other motorcycles followed the pursuing officers while the officer was attempting to make the motor vehicle stop. At some point in time, the officer discontinued the pursuit out of safety reasons, uh, imagining that, uh, weighing out the, the, the reason of, you know, possibility of people getting hurt or damages to property or whatnot, but the pursuit was discontinued, and, uh, no further action was taken on the pursuit. Officers then responded back to the, uh, the site of Chopperheads and end up having a conversation with the business owner. Um, an investigation took place, um, and while, if I could go back a little bit, while the officers were pursuing the motorcycle, the erratic operation of other motorcycles took place in front of the business while the officers were involved in the pursuit. So, where I'm going with this is, there's been a culture that's been created at this location that has disrupted the peace and security of the neighborhood of this business. It's been advertised by the business of food, beer, and fun is being provided at this location. It's on his, on the Facebook post of the business. Um, this has been going on for months, even years, in years, and we will ask if there are any town residents here that want to speak up about their observations, I ask you to come forward. But I will finish up with this, that, um, some of the evidence that's been provided here today has come from the, the local residents, they have provided cell phone video footage of what they're observing, uh, you know, during these moments. But, um, wait, if you don't mind, can you go back to the other folder? Where it says, uh, it should say videos, go up one. Yep, and click on the last one. This is the most recent video that had taken place on August first. Now, the person, I'm not sure if they're here today who.
I am.
Who recorded this video, maybe they can give some better idea of when that was taken, if that was after or before the pursuit, I'm not really sure, but, uh, we can get some more details of that. But what you're seeing is the business out front, uh, the number of motorcycles lined up in the breakdown lane. Uh, with the report with the officers, they estimate between a hundred and fifty and two hundred individuals at this, uh, function, at this business. Um, after going back and looking at some of these videos, you can, you can see how some individuals on the sideline even have their own cell phones out, taking video recordings of the activity from their side of the roadway and stuff, but this culture's been created by the business. The residents here are all up in arms and have been calling the police department, looking for relief of this type of activity to stop. I think peace could be restored if this activity stopped and not being forced upon the community members in this location. If we can go back to that other folder system? Can you click on the second one? Okay, uh, my eyes are a little tough, but, uh, if we can just read the, the, the comments above the, uh, post, this is a post by the co- by the business, Chopperheads Customs Cycles. And, uh, I'll get a little closer, so I'm not, uh.
You're not alone in this one, buddy.
I reckon I'm in the same boat.
That's why I brought the glasses today.
This post here is posted on September first of twenty fifteen. Do you like free food? Do you like free beer? Do you like motorcycles? If you answered yes to any, then you need to come to our bike night tonight. This is the start, if you can go to the next. If you just hit the arrow on the side, it'll go to the, to the next, sorry. Again, Chopperhead Customs Cycles, June seventh, two thousand sixteen, Bike Night is on. Free beer, free food, good times to be had by all, and get a sneak peek of the Born Free build as it progresses. Festivities kick off at six PM in our shop at Thirteenth County Road, East Freetown, Mass. Next one. Again, these posts are on the public page of the business. Bike Night was a killer time, thanks to everyone who came out, great turnout, good times. As usual, I was too busy, hammered, distracted, and living in the moment, so I didn't get to take pics other than this one. So if you've got any good ones, tag us in the post or DM them, and I'll repost. If you missed this one, we do them the first Thursday of the month, so catch you in July. This was posted June second of twenty twenty-three. Next one. Posted September eighth, twenty twenty-three, thanks to everyone who came out to Bike Night, we had a blast, and it looks like you did too, exclamation points. Look at the photos, this is what it looks like in front of Chopperhead Business. Roadway all tore up with black marks, streak marks from whoever's doing burnouts out there. Seriously though, it's awesome to catch such good crowd of people over and such an array of bikes, from classics to choppers to baggers. Next one. April twenty-seventh of this year, Bike Night returns this Thursday, May second, starting at six PM. Booze and pizza provided, good times by all. I hope that doesn't happen there. Don't want to respond to that, but I guess that's the image you want to push, right? Uh, first, Bike Night, definitely good time at Chopperhead Customs Cycles. The business, looks like a clean business. Once this activity is invited, not so good for the residents. Next one. May thirtieth, I could go on with the post and the advertisement by the business for this type of activity to come to county road. What I can tell you from my perspective as the chief in the business, other than these incidences, and I've also visited the business, it looks like a great business, and I, I think they do very well. But, um, it's disappointing that this type of activity is being invited to our community. And to say that once it leaves the property and it's on the street, and it's the police department's problem, that's not a solution to this answer, and I'm looking for some help. This needs to get resolved, and the people here in the community need some relief.
Yeah. Yeah.
How was our zoning officer, so, um, through you to, uh, Mr. Gagnon, did your event happen on September fifth as planned?
No, I canceled it.
You canceled it.
Okay.
Uh, so the very next business there was that Mr. Gagnon's office, it reminded him of his obligation to his license that he has with the town and to his residents and, and townspeople. I also was shocked at the fact that he thought that he could do this, and once it left his property, it was no, was none of his business. Absolutely wrong, all your business, you put everybody at risk, police officers, neighbors, anybody trafficking in that area. I'm just surprised by that, and you would not learn from what, I mean, it's a good town, you're, you're a resident here, but you're putting everybody at risk. And to do that and not feel somehow responsible is just shocking to me.
Yeah, and just like, in general too, like having the free booze and pizza, don't get me wrong, I understand, like, I get it, it's probably a great marketing, you know, tool, but like, you know, today we issued, you know, two different li- licenses to serve on-premise, right? And obviously that's never, you've never gone through that, that exercise to do that, and obviously it's just, it's not being, you know, s- served by someone who's, uh, you know, there's no rules, or it's kind of, it's kind of a free-for-all, right? That, that's a problem in itself, right? Um, also, like, just from personally, like, I have a one-year-old, right, turns one tomorrow, and if my, if I was one of these residents and I had motorcycles going on, starting at six PM, I would lose my mind, like, and, you know, you gotta understand, you're in a residential area here, like, you know. And one, just kind of, like, we, we, as the board here, we don't have a ton of, you know, power, this isn't, this isn't a court, right? Where we do have the power is, is over issuing these licenses, right? So, you know, we don't want to be put in a situation where we have to put your, your business here in question because of this. And it's an easy solution, right? Just stop having the parties and, and stop, you know, you know, obviously upsetting all your neighbors, um, I'm not sure, yep, Carl.
So on another note, so the town affords for this all the time, we get special permit requests all year long.
Yeah.
The board signs off them, each department looks at them, we might put some conditions on it. So this is allowed to happen, but in, in, in a certain way, that's allowed by everybody else, we all play by the same rules. Get a special permit, be open and transparent when you're doing, and we can certainly have, you can have the opportunity to do that safely for everyone.
I, I, I think what bothers me the most is the disregard for the neighbors as well as our first responders. We as a board have been very lenient with everyone. We're, we're pretty pro-business, I feel, and, you know, open. So I want to, I'm, I'm happy when I see that we have a local business and you live in town. To me, that's a, a no-brainer. But what bothers me is when I have the police chief in front of me saying that his officers are responding and dealing with stuff and asking us for help. We should be asking them for help, so it's flipped. So that bothers me, and I'm, I'm, I'm a fair person, but that bothers me, and I think you could understand that based on what we're hearing and I, I don't, that, that, you know, it's just, I, I don't know how else to say it, but that does bother me.
Good evening, Mr. Gagny. How are you today? Uh, welcome. Thanks for being here, residents as well. So I have a couple of questions. Born Free Build. Are you building a bike? Or what's that about?
That was years ago. It was a bike we built for internationally known show.
How'd it do?
Good. We won best British.
Now, have you had, and I understand Facebook posts, you know, First Amendment rights and everything else. You're, hey, if I hear bikes, food, and beer, I'm probably to, probably join, right? It's, it's, we get it, right? Uh, like Selectman Matthews said, it's a good publicity engager, right? Earlier in the day, we spoke a lot about being a small town and a community and being neighbors, right? So us as a board, we have to take these complaints and, and, and take into consideration how they're feeling, not just their feelings, but also the posts and what the road conditions and everything else. We're not here trying to beat you up. I don't think they all are. I think, I think peace, like Chief Rose was saying, is what we're trying to get to, the solution we're trying to achieve, right? So, you know, the, the old adage of, hey, it's not my property, it's on town road, yeah, it doesn't cut it. We all know that, right? It's, it's, it's one, it's easy to say, hard to enforce on, on all levels. So we're asking really, or really thinking about, or, or trying to kind of figure out together as, as a team. We're all here together, right? Not just us versus you, it's not us, it's not because we're sitting here, you're just sitting there. Ultimately, we had the decision, but we want to make sure we, we make the right decision for the business, because we are pro-business, but, but obviously we love our residents. So we have to find that balance. So as a business owner, right, as the person that's been there, you won these awards, you born, you born free build. And full disclosure, I used to own a Harley-Davidson twelve hundred custom. Love them. At the same time, be responsible while you're on them. Having an individual doing wheelies on a Harley, a little harder than a little, a little, you know, a CBR six hundred or, or, you know, nine hundred R R or something like that, right? So they're putting effort. It doesn't help you, you're having your crowds sitting there watching and everything else, so you're kind of almost promoting it in a sense. So not saying that you are, I'm just saying by context, looking at it from a outside looking in, heck, that's a good time, let's go have fun, right? Let's, let's do some, you know, rips and get them up there. That said, work with us here. What are solutions I, do you bring to the table to, hey, have, have your, your, your business operating, but you gotta look around the room. Whether you love them or hate them, they're your neighbors. They live there. They, they, they have families that are concerned. Like, like, like Selectman Matthews said, he has a one-year-old. I have four kids, right? I have friends that live in that street, right? We all do. So as a business owner, as a person, when something goes bad at town hall, I know who I'm going to. Or if something goes bad at town hall, the residents know who to go to. You're looking at them all. So as, as a, as a resident, looking at you, Mr. Gagny, what's your solution to this? What, what, what do you think we should do on this? Now, I, now you know, so I ain't saying your attorney's gonna tell you, it's probably gonna tell you, don't, don't answer that, I understand that. What I'm trying to get to is this. I'm not trying to legally bind you to any answer or any suggestion. What I'm trying to say is, your neighbors are here, they, they need, they need a reprieve to what's going on. As Chief Rose have said, one complaint after another, after another, after another, let alone what my street looks like, right? We'll deal with that later, right? Hopefully some power washing will be all set, right? And I can't prove that it was you or anything, and I get that. But as a business owner, as a resident, neighbor, community member, friend, what, what do we get to do about this?
I think that's the question. Again, this is Attorney Richard Bennett. I represent Mr. Gagny. And as a business owner, he wants to address this. I think, um, before I read a statement, I would like to just state that August first was really the anomaly here, okay? That's where this got out of hand. And that was last month. So give us a chance to work with the police and whoever else from the town, uh, to come up with a plan to address this. Keeping in mind, of course, that these incidents and complaints are limited to what they call Bike Night, okay? Is there a way to manage Bike Night where you encourage people to come to Chopperhead, but without the baggage, right? So that's what we'll be working on. As his counsel, I'll be assisting him with that. One thing the board should know, and maybe you do know this already, um, the town of, uh, Freetown Police Department elected to file applications for criminal complaints against the business and against Mr. Gagny. So before hearing on those, I'm, I don't want to have my client say too much, because he has a right to a clerk's hearing to determine, especially with relation to whether alcohol was provided free or whether it was for sale. That's an issue that has to be addressed by the clerk magistrate. So that hearing is in October. That'll give us an idea of where we stand on that issue, okay? But let me, if you don't mind, let me just read a brief statement, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Well, if you, if you, if you, you can, but if I could, to retort you on that just quickly, whether it was provided or not, your Facebook posts are saying free beer. It says free beer on your Facebook posts.
Right.
Right? So it's kind of hard to kind of segue into, is it really free? But I'm just saying, it, it's, it's sitting on a website.
You also noted though that I think three of those were nine years ago. You noted that, right?
Yes, sir.
Two thousand fifteen. Nine years ago.
Yes, sir.
All right? So keep that in mind. This isn't, this September, August, May. This is May of nine years ago that this came up. And Mr. Gagny, as far as I know, has not been before this board with respect to any type of violations of any type of town code or anything. So you have to put that in context.
We, we have. Yes, sir.
So again, my name's Richard Bennett and I represent Chopperhead. Uh, Chopperhead's been in business for twenty-five years. Chopperhead as a corporation was started in two thousand fifteen by Mr. Gagny. At that time, that's about when he decided to come to Freetown. He was in New Bedford before that, okay? And just again, I'm just gonna read, over the, over these years, Chopperhead has established a high-profile, regional, national, and international reputation uh, for quality restorations and builds of custom motorcycles. And its customers base is not just local, it's regional, it's national. And he actually has clients who are celebrities, musicians, um, actors, a lot of people in the entertainment industry. Freetown, Mass. is associated with Chopperhead Customs. Chopperhead Customs is known across the world for what it does. It's a viable, successful business. And in addition to this high-profile work that they do, they also sell motorcycles, motorcycle parts. They fabricate custom parts, and they maintain a pretty successful retail business of accessories and apparel. You have a very successful business in Freetown, and he's been here for almost nine years. And during that time, he's continued to grow his business. And since establishing the business, he has had, uh, only through May and October, he has Bike Nights, once a month, okay? So if you do the math, let's say there's five, six Bike Nights a year, all right? And the purpose of the Bike Night is not to attract guys who come down the road and do wheelies. Unfortunately, that does happen. The purpose of Bike Night is to celebrate the customers of Chopperhead, their families. This is a family event. Kids come, their moms and dads come. Yeah, you might not like the way they look. You might not like the way their lifestyle, but their families come here because they want to celebrate Chopperhead and what that's all about, custom fabrication of bikes. There's a real culture out there, and his success shows that. Now, do the math, okay? Since moving to Freetown, Chopperhead has sponsored at least forty Bike Nights, at least forty. And not once has there been a citation, an arrest, or any type of negative or derogatory action taken against Chopperhead after forty Bike Nights. So let's move forward to this year, okay? There's been no violence, no fighting, no accidents or injuries, and no alcohol-related events. There was one citation in the police report to the fact that some guys were pulled over a mile and a half away on a, I think it was May of twenty twenty-three. Was there a citation? Was there alcohol involved? Nothing. How about the guys that followed the police on August first? They ended up getting pulled over. Was there a citation? No. Were there any violation of any alcohol laws? No. Also with respect to the police report, when you read them, look at the timeline. There is nothing wrong there until eight o'clock at night. This bike ride run, runs from six to nine. There are no issues reported in the police reports until almost eight o'clock when some rogue bike rider goes in front of an officer who's stationed more than a football field down the road and foolishly does some type of wheelie or a donut in front of her, okay? Prior to that, you look at the police reports. All the police reports say, I observed, I got there about six thirty. I saw no problem with the motorcycle riders. I saw no erratic behavior. It didn't start till an hour and a half, almost two hours after Bike Night. So this isn't a situation where, woo, six o'clock comes, it's time for Bike Night. Let's get to the Wild West. That's not what this is about. And I, I came off my written statement. Anyway, um, it is only this year that concerns have been raised about Bike Nights, and more specifically to August first, okay? Chopperhead wants to underscore to this board that the motorcycle operators who are described in those police reports are not Chopperhead customers, and they're not attendees at Bike Night. They are punks that come by because they know Bike Night is going on. So yes, Bike Night is associated with the fact that this happens. But Chopperhead wants to make sure that you folks know, those aren't his people, okay? And when he says, what can I do about it? I think his reference is to, I can't go out in the road and make them stop. I have no police powers. And I, it sounds disrespectful when you, in the context of, what can I do about it? It's not on my property. That's not what he means. He has no police powers to enforce it. Maybe we come up with a way that he can regulate it, right? Whether we come up with every month, we request a, a permit to can sell alcohol, or we come up with a special permit to conduct a Bike Night, we get police details, whatever we need to do. But I don't think this is a, an historic problem. It's now a problem, but it's not historic. And when you think about it, as far as issuing a license and everything, that's important. Um, finally, Mr. Gagny and Chopperhead want to work with town officials and his neighbors to resolve the issues to make certain that the business continues to thrive in Freetown. I want you to know that September Bike Night was canceled because he did not want to have any issues before talking to the board. Um, he intends to dispute the October third, I'm sorry. October third is the hearing date for the criminal application. He tends to dispute that. He'll have counsel at that. And um, at that point, you mentioned working as a team. All about that. I think he had mentioned to me, when I say he had, I mean, Mr. Gagny had mentioned to me, that he tried to, uh, tried to put together a meeting before this hearing, but he was not successful in doing that. So um, I would like to speak with the chief. I requested if the chief would give me a moment before that, before I started today, but he didn't, declined. Let's work as a team. Let's not decline discussions. And let's move it forward. You have a great business. There are some issues, there's some baggage, but it's nothing that we can't solve.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Yeah, just a name for the record, please.
Yeah, it was a different night. They were better this night because of-
If you could use that to add to the record.
Your name.
Excuse me?
Just need to give your name for the record, please. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a different night there because- It was a different night there because it was a, my name's Julie Bertaglia. I live at ten County Road. I'm the one who took the video. Um, I've been going through this since two thousand and fifteen with all hours of the night. At least they moved it from, they used to do it on Saturday nights. They would have, for a long time, they would have, um, barbecues out there, people out there till ten o'clock at night. Um, this doesn't go from six to nine. This is six to ten. And when they leave, they make sure they open it up and they, they floor it, and you can hear it. Usually there are people doing wheelies on each side. One time I was coming home, one of them almost smashed into my truck. I've gone over there and talked to the people there, and they said, pretty much, um, it was nothing they could do about it, and, you know, I, I should just go on my way. Well, this is enough is enough. That was a good night because the police were parked down by the circle right next to my house, and tho- those guys could see them. And even with the police there, one of them took off with a wheelie and they had to be chased. My, in front of my house looks, it, it looks embarrassing. I went over and said, how would the owner like me go to his house and, with my truck and rip out? And leave all marks all over, all the time. I mean, smoke, I can't even, I'm, I'm, I'm a clinician, I'm on call, and I can't even take a on-call on Thursday night once a month because, um, I'm losing money because his business has to do wheelies all night long. It, it's, it's been going on. I've been complaining since, for a long time. This is, that night, what you saw on that video, sir, that was a good night. That was a real good night.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's a chairman by ten. So what most troubling I heard from the attorney so far is that he has no control over his property over this whole thing. He's only controlled what's inside his property. We have special permits with conditions, but you have to have control of the event. Once you lose control of the event, which it looks like what happened here, there's no going back. There's no going back for that. So, I mean, we have a process, special permit, we issue them all the time. This can't happen again, but people understand they're responsible for their actions on their property when they leave their property.
We don't dispute that now. I mean, I don't, I don't want you to think that. I, I was stating that we dispute that. Certainly Bike Night, especially, I, I believe we're talking about Bike-
You agree we have control over people leaving his property.
Yeah, he, he can't, he can't stop. Once he, once they leave his property, he can't police them. But I agree with you, and my client agrees with you, that it's Bike Night that attracts them there. So had Bike Not, Night not existed, that wouldn't happen. Totally agree with you. So how can we do-
Could happen, right? Yes, anticipate that this could draw the unwanted people that we don't want here.
And that's why we need to be-
Control part, right?
That's why we-
So we have some history here. So I worked in New Bedford for five, six years doing the same kind of work. And guess what my work was? Chopperheads. We had complaints from neighbors there, right? So this is not new, and Mr. Gagny knows this, so here we are, now he moves to Freetown, get the same thing, and I'm still the guy. This cannot happen. We deserve better than that. He, he's got a great business. He knows that. World renowned, right? Everything's on, on, uh, you know, on the web nowadays. Great business. But that's a bad reflection on, on his business. I gotta, gotta tell you that. So, uh, we hope we can work this out. It's a process to do that.
Here's my, my thing is that, um, you know, you started off by talking about how successful he is as a business, right? He's world-renowned. He has celebrity clients. He has this. Why? Why do this? You're putting your business at jeopardy. It, it, it's, it's a simple solution. If you're that successful, there's no need to hold these Bike Nights and just not do them, right? If that's what's coming around, if, if everyone around is saying, yeah, you know what, it's bad, or it's fine, but, you know, the first Thursday of every month, I can't work, I can't do this, I don't want to leave my house, whatever, don't do them anymore. We, you canceled this month, let's cancel them going forward, get rid of them, and then you'll have no complaints. And, I mean, it seems like a pretty simple solution unless anyone can tell me why, what the valid point of having them is. If I'm gonna be a busy business, the last thing I want to do is jeopardize my business. And I say canceling those nights will make it that easy. You don't have to worry about it.
Let's, let's unpack a little bit, uh, based on your, some of your statements you made. There is a criminal complaint, right, issued by us to, from our police department onto the legal authorities. So that, that'll get handled there, right? That, that's, that's what the purpose of the courts are, to handle the, the criminality of, of whatever's going on as far as people being pulled over down the road, whether or not they're associated with Chopperheads. If they're not, you got shafted on that deal. That's just, that's, from a non-legal perspective, sorry for you, right? However, you know, some valid points were made. If it didn't happen, you know, could we infer that that wouldn't have occurred? Sure, we can, we can go down that road, right? Um, one of the statements made that some people don't like how the way we, you dress or if you're tattoos. I couldn't care less what you look like, how many tattoos you have. I don't think anybody does, you know. I don't think anybody does, you know? Respect yourself, respect thy neighbor. Right? That's, that's where we're getting to. So what we're here for is you're the business owner, right? And I, and I know it's, it's easier for me to sit here behind my desk with, with my little, little name tag here and, and, and say ABC. And I, and I understand that. However, I have people sitting here that have genuine concerns for their well-being, their, their friends and family, their property and everything in between. Whether you agree with that or your, or friends of yours agree with that, that's not up for debate. They're here, their concerns are valid. Right? And I'm gonna listen to them. We have listened to them, we're gonna continue to listen to them, but we have to do something about it. Going forward and continuing doing the same thing over and over again, I believe we call that the definition of insanity. All right? So we don't want that. Right? I, I think your attorney, well spoken, so thank you for the information provided, Mr. Gagnon, by your attorney. A solution, a, for everybody involved, specifically the neighbors around your property. Those are, I live in a sonnet. I don't hear burnouts, tires spinning and things like that. They do. They have to live through this at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. Right? Whether they got pulled over by the police a mile down the road or right from your property, they don't care. And, and, and they shouldn't. All they know is they're, they're getting woken up because of the noise. Right? And, and I, listen, I checked you out, I went to Chopperheads, you got some cool stuff. Love the property, right? Love the business. Listen, you're rocking it. You are world renowned, like I checked you out, you do have some great clients. I applaud you for that. That's what we want for Free Town. But again, you have neighbors. You, Free Town, we hear about this all the time. We're a small town community established in the 1600s. That's built on family values. Now we have a business creating disturbance to our families and to our neighbors and communities. Yeah, maybe on my little soapbox up here, sure. Right? Again, behind my name, right? That's why you elected me. However, their concerns are valid. So we, we do need some of the solutions your attorney provided, working with us. Maybe canceling Bike Nights, maybe no Free Bear, maybe saying, hey, you can't do this. Establishing road rules, working with the police and making sure someone there. That's what we're looking for. Right? We want, our, our goal is not to sit here and shut you down. You're going away, this is, you're going, that's not, that's not, that's not what we're here for. We're here to figure out what's going on, listen to the individuals sitting here beside you and behind you and in front of you and figure out, hey, can we all just get along? Like, what do we gotta do to get there? Right? Me dispatching my police officers and fire every, so many often, they're busy. They're, they're not a fully, there's three units at one end and what, three on the other, right? Or four sometimes? They have things to do and to respond to motorcycle noises to the same location over and over again. It gets taxing on not only them, but also the residents. So we need something.
Mr. Chairman, through you again. So we haven't heard from Mr. Gagnon if he plans on continuing this, and if so, is it with a special permit?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, like, so let's just stay where we are now, right? So your license will be up for renewal January 1st. Right? So we're not gonna make any decisions today. Right? I think this is, this is a hearing just to, to hear everyone out, talk about where we stand right now. And then, you know, we need to have a path forward. I think you need to work with the officials in town to have a path forward. And so that's fair for everybody. Right? Or us renewing your license is gonna be a lot more difficult come January 1st. Right? I mean, and I, I think, you know, unless anyone has anything specific they wanted to talk about right now, I'm gonna start to wrap this up just because we do have a lot more on this agenda tonight that we have to get to. So if anyone else has anything to, to say?
I'd like to ask.
Just name, name please for the record.
So my name's Crystal, on 3 County Road. I've actually learned some, I didn't realize how successful the business is, which is exciting to hear. But at the same time, if I invite people to my house for a summer cookout on the 4th of July or whatever great holiday we celebrate, if someone leaves my residence inebriated, recklessly, not, I'm, I'm gonna be, cops are gonna show up to my door and they're gonna ask me what's going on, that event would be immediately ended.
Yeah.
And I'm sure I would be subject to some fine or some penalties or to come before the board and explanation myself.
And I think that, so like, just to kind of like, where, what this board can do, right, is, you know, we, we can't take any crim, you know, we're not a, a legal board here, we're not, uh, like, we don't have any powers right there. So what we can do though is, is, and there's already been kind of a criminal complaint made, which they're, they're gonna address, right? For the outcomes of that, when we go to renew this license, right, we can, we use all, all that information to say, okay, whether or not we, we have grounds to not renew this license potentially, right?
What are possible violations from that event? Alcohol?
I mean, the thing is, I, I don't, and I don't even know anything about the criminal complaint.
Occupancies, how many people per minute on premise?
Yeah, I mean.
What are we talking about?
Yeah, I don't know, chief, if you want to speak to any of that or if you, if you're at liberty to, I'm not sure.
There are no citations, as I said. Other than the complaint, which essentially is sale of alcohol.
Yeah, without a permit.
Which is contested.
Yeah.
Other than that, there are no citations.
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, right? I think it's not, not necessarily doing anything illegal, right? I mean, that's what we're kind of talking about here. I mean, if, if there was, someone did get in an accident drunk leaving there, right? If that did happen, then, then we'd be talking about it right now. But that didn't happen, right? Now, I get that. Yeah, very fortunately. I'm, I'm honestly, it's been going on for 15 years and that hasn't happened, which is, I mean, that is something to take into consideration, right?
I will say regarding this incident, there was another civil bylaw infraction that was documented and a citation was issued to Mr. Gagnon, which he ended up paying for at the town clerk's office.
Okay.
For the illegal burn at that location.
Gotcha.
So there was another violation.
Okay. Understood, thank you. So, and I think, you know, this was just a forum to kind of hear everyone out and give, and information gathering for us when we go and, and have this license up for renewal again, right?
So it could be potentially, if it didn't bug, our, you know, immediate solution of discontinuing. And then permit for everything else.
Well, so they say, what, what, what we have power over here is, is actually his class 2 motor vehicle license. Right? So his, his, like, his license to actually sell motorcycles on premise. Right? That, we don't have any control, like, from my perspective, you know, is that, you know, he's having these parties that are taking place there. You know, we all, everyone has parties, right? I had a birthday party for my son yesterday. Like, you're allowed to have parties at your house without a permit, you know, or your business, but if you're, if you're selling, you know, or giving alcohol away or whatever, whatever the, this is obviously something higher than just a, a, a family cookout. Right? There, 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 a special permit, there is processes and procedures to take place to facilitate that kind of thing. Right? So, like, with, with guidelines, like, when it ends and, and how many people can be there and, you know, controls, control, all that kind of different factor, so things don't get out of control.
And, and stuff like that is even usually, you know.
Is the formality of how to move forward, eyeing out in this meeting, like, if he left here tonight, if the business decided to throw another event and the same avenue it's taken, same results happen?
Yeah, I could tell, I could tell you what happened is.
Public hearing, please, like, how's it begin to direct you exactly how to go process the correct way to do it?
No, I think this is, this is just as a, this is a forum to kind of bring the two sides together to speak about it. And then, then we, we'll, as a board, are gonna vote when his license is up for renewal. We have to vote as a board, so we don't, we don't know how it's gonna go, but we have to vote on every license every year. And if two of us feel that we shouldn't allow this license because of the impact to the community, then it won't be renewed. And then, and then that, that, that brings a whole nother line of, of situation that will take place.
And we can.
Does the selectman do a, a action plan for somebody to get their license? So if this is, there's so many complaints about this business and this night, and is the selectman gonna do an action plan that the business will have to follow to be able to have these Bike Nights? And to, and, and that should be given to him prior to him renewing his license?
I mean, I, I honestly kind of see the, these parties and the, his class 2 motor vehicle license, I do kind of see them as separate things. Right? Like, I, I understand what you're saying, right? But, but they are, like, we're talking about.
There's consequences to your actions as a business owner. So I think if I'm one, if I decided that I was gonna do something at my house, and there's consequences to the actions. And these parties have caused so many problems on County Road. And it's just not fair to us that, okay, we're gonna renew your license because it makes money for the town. Like, I mean, I know he said that something about, well, this is a waste of tax payers' money, people coming out, the police coming out. Well, I pay taxes too. Not only he pays taxes, I pay taxes in this town too. So I have the right to enjoy peace and quiet at my home.
Yep, I, I, I hear you.
I just wanna go on record with why I said that. That was to a full fire truck showing up to a 55-gallon drum with some cardboard burning in it. That's what I was referring to.
Understand. I think we have someone back there that'd like to say something. Yeah, just name for the record, please.
My name's Saya. I've lived in Free Town for 28 years, so I've known Chopperhead, I know him, I've been 28 years. And, you know, and the problem is, this is this man's livelihood. So he has these parties, but these people come from New Bedford, they're coming on bikes, they're young kids. You, you hear them from New Bedford, they come in, they're not part of his, his party, they're not bikers from his party. They're kids that come in from the city. And New Bedford allows them in there because New Bedford chased them out of there, New Bedford knows they're there. So it's nothing to do with, with shoots, nothing at all. Been there 28 years, I don't have a problem, yeah, he had a party lately, it's last few years, it's out of control. Don't say it's every month it's out of control. No, it's not. That's a lie. So people lie about stuff. Been there 20 years, it's been, but it's other people from New Bedford and just these kids, I don't know. They, they, they ride these bikes, they go crazy, I don't, I don't get it. They're not from Chopperhead, they have nothing to do with Chopperhead. And so to say that the town has been going cra, no it hasn't. Been there 28 years and last, last two, three years, I say, yeah, a lot of people from the outside has been coming in on their bikes. That's nothing to do with Chopperhead. That's just people coming in. So to say that he's a brought in neighborhood, he's doing that, no he's not. Absolutely not.
My house is directly across, her house is behind my house.
I'm behind you, yes I am, but you, you also complain.
One at a time, first of all, right?
And she also complains about everything. She complained when, when, when the guy put the building up, the lights are in, shining in her house, they're robbing her house. She complains about everything. That's not how it works.
Not the venue for that, suppose.
I'm not, I'm just saying the truth.
That's, that's not how it works. She complains about everything.
I'm just saying the truth. I'm just saying the truth of what my truth is and I live across.
I understand what you're saying, all right.
Ladies, ladies, ladies and gentlemen.
With Chopperheads, like I said, it, it's not from Chopperheads, the bikes are not from Chopperheads.
I understand, thank you. All right.
So, so go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think we're gonna be here all night, if, if we don't, we have to kind of get this moving, right? So I think where I stand here is, I think this was a good information gathering session. There's some, some, I think, I think you need to go through the proper channels before you have another Bike Night and go through and get a special permit. Right? There's no other way. I, I just, I won't feel safe doing that.
I canceled the September one. I've, I've told him, I've told the chief, I'm easy to talk to, I will work with you going forward, whatever we gotta do. We were gonna have a sit-down meeting that got changed and loo.
Yep.
To this.
Sure.
And we're still gonna go forward and figure out what to do, like, from here.
All right. And, you know, we can, I think, opening up lines of communication, like, we can make sure, we can make this work, right? I'm not gonna make any rash decisions right now, but I do think we need a special permit. And then, you know, it might, it might be having a police, you know, on-premise there, you know, something of that nature. But we can work through those. We're not gonna figure that out right now.
And I would suggest perhaps that the, the board make a motion to perhaps continue this to your November hearing so that we can report back to you on what happened between zoning enforcement and public safety and my client, so that you'll get a report that shows how we're gonna address it, just that we need to have that time to do that. But continuing the hearing so that we can submit that, so that you have a month before the hearing or the license reissue, you'll be very well informed as to where we all are.
Yeah, so on that though, for, for me to continue this hearing and not close it now, I, I agree with what you're saying there, right? Because that, that'd be, we can go, come back and, and see where, you know, that we know where we are now? What, what improvements have we made? I think it just, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, if you close it, you can't take, you technically can't take new information.
Yeah, so, but if I, if I continue it to November, we have to do a specific date and time though, right?
Yeah, do the 4th or the 18th.
Of November?
Correct.
Let's do the 18th and what, is this, do it 7 p.m.?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add one real quick, to, to the, to the neighbors in the back, the plan of action, the discussion, right? When we, when we review all application for businesses, customer complaints, citizen complaints are part of the business renewal process. Right? There's nothing new. That, that's every municipality in the country, right? It does take that into effect. I did hear some great things from your attorney, Mr. Gagnon, and, and from you, and, but also I'm also listening to the neighbors. So I'm assuming by advice of legal counsel that the last meeting, that the last one was canceled because it was like, hey, let's let this calm down and, and get clear heads ahead of us, right?
That was in my own vision.
Oh, perfect, even, even better. Right? You don't have to, he doesn't, you don't get to charge him. Right? Ultimately, January 1st is right around the corner. Right? Be cognizant of that. Not, not, that's not a threat or anything, but cognizant of your neighbors, right? These complaints do weigh on our decisions. So they are logged in. Right? Legality wise, that'll be worked out in court. We'll take that with whatever the outcome is. But neighbors, that means a lot to me. And, and I, and I, and I see it in your eyes, maybe it means a lot to you as well. I know it means a lot to the neighbors, they're here. You know, they live in East Free Town, they came all the way here. I had to, sorry. Right? They're here because they're, they're concerned, right? And you got, you, you have to understand that. Right? And I, right? So work through the legalities and we'll reconvene at, at another time and talk about it again. All right? But at, but be, but until that time, think of these people. If they keep coming back to us, we'll have to take further action. We, we, nobody wants that. All right? Let them sleep in peace. That make sense? I know it's tough. I, I know you're running a, a sexual business and I'm proud of you for that, I am. We all are. We all are. Right? Even the neighbors that came out too, and maybe not in so much support of it until they learn more about your business, right? Opinions change. Work with us to work with you. All right? So we ask.
All right, so I want to entertain a motion to continue this hearing to November 18th at 7 p.m.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we're gonna go back and I'll do, um, agenda item 24, back to you.
Oh, yeah, it's on to me, yeah. Do you, do you wanna knock, go back to 5 first?
My name is David.
Do you wanna do that stuff first?
Let's just get your stuff done, then we'll, we'll do that, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. We're just gonna give them one minute to clear, I'll sleep with them.
Yeah.
Use what.
Did I steal this room?
Is that her name?
I'm cold.
I think I stole this room.
I'm always cold, but.
Have a good one, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was like 80 at one point and looked at it again, it was like in the 60s.
Look, to this weekend, the end of this week, it's supposed to be back up into the eighties.
I'm freezing right now.
No, I, well, that's why I just sat there, I'm like, I'm cold, I'm always cold, but.
I get tired, I think I start to get cold easier.
Yeah, I have, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I think we should be good now.
Yep.
Excuse me. Agenda item number twenty-four, discussion and vote on whether to establish a Robert Dean donation account that Conservation Commission would manage. So recently, you know, in the last meetings, we had a family member in here and talking about Mr. Dean's wishes. He's in his nineties and living in California and would like to see Port of Pastures get back to where it was. And Mr. Dean has stated that he's willing to donate a large sum of money to, to make this happen. But, you know, there's certain procedures that need to happen. So the first one is that we need to create the donation account for him to put it into. So procedural in nature, a no-brainer in my eyes. Anyone have any issues with it or?
No, I think it's great.
No, thank you, Mr. Dean, this is amazing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it truly is. Alright, so with that, I am going to entertain a motion that we establish a Robert Dean donation account that Conservation Commission would manage.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number twenty-five, discussion and vote whether to approve the spending plan for the donations received from the Robert Dean donation account to perform all aspects of refurbishing the Port of Pastures open space area to its original character. These expenditures include hiring consultants and engineering, and engineers to design and permit the refurbishment as well as the hiring of the necessary contractors to perform all the work and all incidental and related expense as further discussed in Port of Pastures agreement. So Mr. Dean, you know, he, he sent us in a letter basically saying like, you know, this is what I wanna see it get back to. Debbie, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add to this?
No, again, this is procedural, he, he had drafted the agreement that's the next agenda item. But, in order for procedurally, we have to open the account, put the money in, and then we have to direct how it's spent. So I just drafted sort of the language based on his agreement and what he's looking to spend that money. It only to be spent on Port of Pasture and the refurbishing of that back to when he was a kid and more of a beach, I think, environment. The Conservation Commission will control the money, but they can't just spend it on anything that they want to spend it on. It has to be spent on Port of Pasture.
Deb, because it's donation and conservation and everything in between, does it follow the procurement laws? Of ten thousand or more has to go through the municipal and everything else, all that other state fund procurement?
A donation account.
So it'd be almost like a, a, how do I say, like, is it more of a, a private account to be able to do what they want under the direction?
Right. I mean, it, it may not make sense for them to, I mean, engineers and consultants are generally exempt from thirty B. So they'll have an easy time with that, but then contractors, because they might not know who's gonna, who could actually do the work, they probably have to put it out to bid anyway.
Right.
But, donate, funds, things being paid for out of a donation account are exempt from procurement.
My only question on this, and I don't know if you can answer me, is, you know, Mr. Dean, I don't know if I should be stating how much, would gave a large sum of money. And if the money that it costs to do what he has outlined goes over and above, is that something we're gonna have to do?
I don't think we can, we can't spend more than that without, Conservation has their own funds, right? They have their own funds, they, they could, they could appropriate their own funds, I think, to, to spend on it. But other than that, it would have to come before town meeting like any other expenditure.
Perfect, no, I guess, cause that's what, I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't say, okay, we sign here on the dotted line, we do all this, we spend all his money and then we still need another fifty thousand dollars. Because we signed on to this, do we then need to hurry up and fork over fifty thousand dollars? I guess is my point, I don't, I think it's a.
Yeah, well, look at the last video, right? I've watched, I don't know how many times, right? And I'll probably have to watch it again to make sure I'm right on this. I believe what, I forgot her name, I was here with, with Charlie.
It was his sister.
His sister.
Yeah.
Forgot her name, I'm sorry if you're watching, you, you were great, I forgot your name, yeah. You know, I believe, I believe she said, and Charlie said that the original funds were to get the consultants and everything else and then potentially there'd be more funds based on what they find, right? Because I, because I do have the same concern with you, conservation money, it does come out of town meeting, but as taxpayer dollars diverting funds from one area to another for conservation. So, for, for us to say, hey, they have money in their conservation account, yes, for the entire town, not just this one project. So we have to be cognizant of that, right? And I know we are, I know we will be, but for those out there watching, we are, we're not, we're not just willy-nilly all the funds from the past year saying it's only going to this, that's for the whole town, so.
I think the phased approach is so that they can get the engineers and the consultants to look at how it was in, you know, yesteryear. And, you know, obviously permitting is difficult in the wetland area. So they may not be able to do what they wanna do. So the first phase of this is to get the feasibility study, see what they can do, see what the permits that they can get. And then what it will cost, they'll probably get a quote out of that. And then, I, I mean, you know, I think that Mr. Dean would fund what it's gonna cost and that's sort of the idea that I'm getting.
Okay, yeah, and I, I kind of felt that way, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure. And I, so I just kind of wanted clarification, cause I never wanna put it, and I know that, you know, your job is, and you do a great job of it, is make sure we don't get ourselves in danger and.
Yeah, it would have to go before town meeting for a vote to spend any substantial sums of money, so the town could say yay and nay on that.
Alright, cool, no, that was my only question, so, any other questions or, you know? Alright, so, with that, I entertain a motion to approve the spending plan for the donations received from Robert Dean donation account to perform all aspects of refurbishing the Port of Pastures open space area to its original character. These, I, I don't know, I feel like I should read the whole thing. These expenditures include hiring consultants and engineers to design and permit the refurbishing as well as the hiring and necessary contractors to perform all the work and all incidental and related expenses as further discussed in Port of Pastures agreement.
I'll make that motion?
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number twenty-six, discussion and vote whether to approve and sign the Port of Pastures agreement which discusses the uses of the donations from Robert Dean. So, you know, it's already just talked a little bit about there, what they had in mind for it, right? So it's really to, to design and engineering and all that. So, I've read through it and it's all good to me, I don't have a problem signing any questions or anything.
No?
No. This is, this is a great, great thing for Portis Pasture.
Oh, absolutely.
It's an amazing, actually amazing thing for Portis Pasture, this is beautiful.
Right, it's an amazing individual to do that, so thank you again. Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve and sign the Port of Pastures agreement which discusses the uses for the donations from Robert Dean.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so.
Alright, so we're gonna go back to agenda item five now?
Yeah. This has to get done tonight.
Yeah, alright, so, agenda five, discussion and vote whether to approve articles for, on the warrant for the special town meeting on ten twenty-one as presented. So, let's just go kind of, I'm just gonna.
Yeah, so each warrant article basically needs to be approved to be put on the warrant. Now, mind you, this is a pretty, it's, it's a rough draft. I do not have an estimate of free cash at the moment, so you're gonna see a lot of these do not have dollar figures in them. Our goal tonight is to sort of just get the preliminary okay from you to get it to town council so they can start reviewing our language and our, you know, our presentation of it to correct those things so that when it comes back, we can finalize it by just adding numbers or just tweaking it here and there.
Okay, sounds good, so the first article here is Justice Tree Warden pay from yearly to hourly?
Yes, we, he's been being paid hourly, but when I put it on the warrant.
You're paying yearly, right?
I put eighteen thousand dollars as a salary.
Yeah.
Instead of hourly, so, like, that means he gets paid whether he works or not, and that's not really how he works. He goes out and works when he needs to, if you have a big storm, he might work sixty hours that week. So, this is just sort of a logistic type of thing.
I'm good with that, everyone good with that?
Yes.
Well, just to clarify, that's up to eighteen thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so how, are we using this, like, I'm trying to think how we're gonna make this vote. Do you wanna vote individually? I don't think so.
You can vote on all of them, are you, we can.
Yeah, we just say.
If you wanna pull one out.
Okay, alright, alright, so we're good with this one. Next one, correction, Free Town Water Sewer Commission salary composition, looks like this was just like a mistake.
Yeah, I think they asked for a reason, I didn't put it on the, I didn't put it in the warrant.
Okay, so from two fifty to five hundred per person?
Already in their budget.
Okay, no problem there, any questions or concerns? Next one is funding for union contract for dispatchers.
These again are required where we're retroactive with our union contracts. I will have the dollar figures for that, but we just finished this one, so I will have those dollar figures to fund that.
So that's gonna be the same for this one, the next one.
Yeah.
The next one.
I do have a figure on highway, I believe it's thirty-eight thousand. I'll be having exact amount, but just so you know.
Okay, that's the retrospective part, and then, water and sewer?
I don't believe we need that, so I have to confirm that we don't need that, but it's the same thing. It's just pulling the two employees out of their respective con, you know, but I, I, I've done that, we did this three years ago and believe we just put them through the regular union.
Okay, so this next one is increase for electricity at AAA pump station?
So it looks like the water and sewer, it looks like they're gonna run short on some of their line items in, within their budget. I do not believe they need to do these at town meeting, they have their own reserve fund, just like the town has a reserve fund that they can pull from without town meeting vote. I have to get, I have to get confirmation of that, I spoke to Paul Sadik today and told them I think I'm gonna be pulling these articles, but for the sake of moving the process forward, just review them, their, their, their money items, they're all within their budget. It's, it's not gonna come to the town floor, it's the water and sewer budget. But I, I don't think we need to do this the way they've got it set up, but they requested these be put on the warrant.
Okay, that's fine, next one's increased postage, water sewer commission enterprise fund.
Postage, yeah.
Yeah, postage, they need more money because postage is more expensive, yeah, got it. So we have some twenty twenty-four prior year invoices?
This one needs to be on there because we can't pay any prior year invoices without going to town meeting for. There's been an ongoing issue, I think, with New Bedford water, that we just don't get them in time. And then we pay them late, and this is reoccurring balances and whatnot, so this needs to happen. We have changed our procedures, they email the bills now, and Chandler's allowed to sign off on the bills so we don't have to wait for them to have a meeting to sign the bills, and we're getting them right into accounting. So this problem will be rectified, but there's probably bills that just got missed and they need to be paid.
Yeah, okay. So that's, next one's also prior invoice, I think this, it's okay. Increase stipend to reduce costs for outside vendor. This is by the water commission article.
Yeah, this is, they pay, they pay an outside vendor to do black flow prevention and this, this would, they wanna increase that line. Again, it may come off, but they're just, again, trying to reallocate things within their own budget.
Okay. Tree removal, twenty-five grand for a cemetery?
Yes, that's from the cemetery commission.
Trees are expensive.
Well, and you have to work around the headstone, right? So it's a little more precise and a little more, you have to use like cranes and whatnot.
Yeah, trees are expensive. Alright, and then another fifteen grand for repair, restoration, some monuments.
It's also from the cemetery commission, yeah.
Okay, well, that, fund clerical position for board of assessors?
So, we had a board of assessors, part-time clerk a few years ago, I asked him to have that moved to a floater because there's not a lot of need, excuse me, for a part-time clerk in the assessors. That, Mike is the assistant assessor, only works part-time. But with the influx of the ADU changing, you know, the accessory dwelling units and the common ownership issues, I think that his office might get an influx of being a little bit busy.
Yep.
So, his board has, is asking for the funding, which wasn't funded, I, I didn't put the floater in our budget this year because I, I didn't want a person that was fifty percent of the time not really working.
Yep.
So they're coming back and asking for a part-time senior clerk to be funded because I have no other avenue to fund it for them.
That makes sense, any questions?
Nope.
Alright, so this is match of funds for the Selma Street Bridge project?
So we received a federal grant for five hundred thousand dollars, they require a twenty percent match. You know, we have it in our stabilization, but I'm waiting for free cash, I just assumed take it and put this money aside so it's there when we get, when we get that.
Makes a lot of sense.
So you're saying we had to pay a hundred grand, basically, right? Cause you said twenty percent.
Yeah, I may ask for a little bit more just in case we go over, but it will be, the match is a hun- is a hundred grand, yes.
Hundred thousand minimum, but yeah, we can put more into it.
Cool, match, same thing for the next one, match funds to the conservation library project?
Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project, depending on free cash, I will have a number, but the match is twenty percent.
Okay, makes sense, I think everyone should, you'd hope people will support that, it's free money, you should spend a little bit of money. Alright, next one is fund paving of highway yards, so a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
This again, this came from the Highway Surveyor Chuck, and it's one of those projects that the MS four engineers have come down every year. They're telling us we need to do this, we need to do it, we sort of, yeah, yeah, we will do it, and then we don't do it.
Cause of the salt piles?
Yeah, Chuck is really, you know, I think at this point, if we have the funds available, again, when free cash is updated, I'll let, you know, these things might change. I think at this point, we really gotta do something to move towards our stormwater compliance.
Yeah.
And not that the permit's not in compliance, but they're gonna start looking for us to do these types of projects.
Makes sense, alright, so then, next one is two hundred fifty thousand to, for maintenance and upkeep of town roads. Roads are expensive.
Again, submitted by the Highway Surveyor, you know, he got five hundred thousand dollars to do the roads, but he's been doing a lot of work on the roads.
Yeah.
I think many years, he didn't get anything but the chapter ninety money, which is roughly four hundred thousand, and it goes, the money now to do anything is just astronomical.
He did a great job on the Bay Shores.
Yeah, I haven't been down there today, so I'm excited to go home.
My roads.
It's nice to drive and not hit the hard bumps when you're leaving.
It's great.
I came here, I was like that, so it's beautiful.
So, again, if, if the, if cash, the free cash is not there, I, you know, I have no problem going back and saying, hey, can we, can we push this off or whatever, we'll come back and come up with a plan. I usually finagle that and figure out what we can afford and what we can't, I just don't have the number yet.
Okay, HVAC systems at town hall?
Again, if we have free cash available, this is something that Carl and I have been working, you know, thinking about, we'll be, you know, we're getting new windows put in, and then of course, you know, we're still dealing with heat that doesn't come on and air conditioning that doesn't work, so the next step will be doing some HVAC or.
Do we have a ballpark number?
I don't, I'm gonna probably do it in phases where I do one floor and then the next floor. So again, this one can move until spring town meeting, but if we have the funding, I may set it aside.
Okay, sounds good, funding for digitalization?
So we're been in the process of digitalizing all of the records since I've come on board. Kevin Desmarish from the Board of Health was able to get his coalition there to pay for all of their files to be put up in the cloud and digitalized. And, you know, our building's in the floodplain, in the flood, it's a hundred and fifty years old. I would like to have our records all digitalized because if, if, if there's a catastrophe on some level, we're gonna lose everything. So, I, I would say, I know it was about thirty thousand dollars, I think, to do the building department, which is the department I'm looking to do, I'm almost done with all the other departments. So, I would say rough, and I'll have better figures, but I'd say around thirty thousand dollars to, to continue that so that we're cloud-based, old files.
Okay. Next one, transfer land from treasury and tax title custodial to Conservation Commission, this is.
Oh yeah, there's a piece of land on the corner of Forge Road and Richmond Road there, that point, if you were going seventy-nine heading towards Berkeley. And you have to bear a left where like piping systems is. That, that little corner piece right there is, was taken for tax title, it's wetlands, and so Conservation would like it transferred to them. It's not valuable, it, it really can't be sold for any, any real purpose there.
Makes sense, easy peasy.
This was a petition that came in from Brian Almina, right? Did I get that right? Regarding what he had talked to the board about getting a Department of Commerce and Commission.
So, yeah, this is, we can't, we.
Nothing we can do about it.
Nothing we can do about this one, so it doesn't matter.
I don't know if the signatures have been certified.
They, I haven't heard yet from them.
So, I mean, there's a possibility the signature's not certified and it will come off, but I, I don't, usually they do get certified.
That's cool, alright, the next one, rescinding existing general bylaws and adopt reformatted bylaws, this is bylaw changes.
This is all of the work that Cheryl has been doing with the bylaw committee and the codification.
Yep.
So, the codification is just like minor changes, like, instead of it being nu- nu-, you know, one through ten, it's now A through Z, whatever. Not really substantive changes, but those kinds of changes, but it's easier to just say, look, we're gonna get rid of all of the existing bylaws and bring in these new ones that we recodified, and this is what she's attempting to do with these articles.
That makes sense to me, alright, next one, additional fund editorial and legal analysis of town bylaws. So this is just some more money to do.
This is to do the second step of the codification process and review all of the bylaws to tell us whether we're in compliance legally.
Alright, next one is delete duplicate provisions in bylaws, that makes sense?
Yeah, so there's just a duplicate that they're taking care of.
There's so many of them.
Yeah, that. This next one, rescinding existing zoning bylaw and adopt reform bylaws, it's the same thing, but just different.
I think so, it's the same, I'll look at this, but I think it's the same thing as the codification, it's just gonna sort of clean up things, citation numbers, different, different.
Yeah, I think it's the same, it's probably like, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly what the difference is, but.
It's a zoning, so zoning has to come from the planning.
Yep, 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 yep.
So it's the same.
Same thing, it's just for the zoning, not the other ones.
And they have to have a public hearing on it, so it has to technically come from the planning board?
Yep.
Yeah, trying to format that.
Alright, cool, next, add oath deadline, so this is one where if you don't go and get signed in by the clerk, town clerk, then something happens, this is to stay off Cheryl's bad boy list?
Yeah, she said you decline the position if you don't get, if you don't get sworn in.
This is, I mean, I think we've all been guilty of probably not getting sworn in in a timely fashion. I think this would incentivize people to get sworn in in a timely fashion, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I think, if anyone, it might impact me negatively, but I think. I think, if anyone, it might impact me negatively, but I think, I like the spirit of it.
First sentence, to ensure compliance, MGL, chapter forty-one, section one oh seven. Let's do it. Simple as that.
And, and, I mean, and to be, uh, be fair with her, she's trying to now get, you know, how many people in to get signatures. Chasing people around, coming to meetings, doing, it's kind of an unfair ask to her, so, you know, maybe nothing, nothing.
Yeah, and then what's gonna, like. Downside for us is like, probably gonna have situations where we have to go then and reappoint somebody or s- something of that nature, but, I mean, I think that this was just. I have more emphasis that we get these things done.
You know, I, you know, I work for another town and we, I was appointed one time. And, and, and sworn in one time, and I was there four years. So I'm not sure why we do this, like, process of every year, then, it just makes it very, very, you know. I go and get sworn in, but then I get sworn in again the next week for two other positions and then the following week I'm getting sworn in for five more positions. It's not just a one and done, so it's a lot, um, so I, I, I like how to look at the need to. Appoint people every year, because if you get a three-year term, you're here for three years. You should, like, as a selectman, you should be appointed once in three years and sworn in once for three years, not every single year.
Now that makes sense, and I, I would hope that that's the case and then it will make things a lot easier and take away a lot of this burden from, yeah, exactly, everyone.
And then one thing to take away from these as well, when you look at warrant articles, these, these are policies and procedures for the town. So we just went through it from, um, on the agenda items eleven through fourteen, policy and procedures. Many past meetings, policies and procedures, warrant articles are policies and procedures for the town. So when people read these, policies and procedures, that's what they are, we're, we're cleaning things up, making sure they're right, correct, done on time, efficient. Am I wrong on that? So, policy procedure, folks.
All right, so, and then that's, so that, that's the deadline, I think I'm okay with it, and then. We'll just have to get my, my, my butt into the town hall, get some things better. All right, uh, next one is amend regional school district agreement. I missed one, sorry. Next one, sorry, is addition of employment position to bylaw, so this is, uh, a new.
Just to add the outreach work of that, we, which is okay, if we, um, town council said it was okay for me to do it after the.
Kind of a little retrospectively, but that makes sense, and also that one's funded already, right?
Yeah, it's funded through a grant.
Through a grant, so, okay, cool. All right, this next one, amend regional school district agreement, so, uh, article will start the process necessary to amend the school, regional school district agreement. To see if the town will vote to amend the agreement for the establishment of the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District by adding the following section. Financial reporting to, to towns, okay, that's, and then superintendent shall provide quarterly financial statements to the board of selectmen of each town. These reports shall have detailed revenue and expenditures line by line. Hiring and our discipline action of the regional's centric, uh, district central office, superintendent, business director, accountant. A committee should be created to hire the central office employees for the regional school district central office. A committee should be created to hire, like, uh, okay. The committee would comprise of fourteen members, including the eight existing regional school committee members and two selectmen from the town. Free Town and two from Lakeville, that might be a problem, because then we'll have a quorum.
And that's a big.
Right, and when the council comes back, I'm sure he'll tell us, hey, you can do one and one.
I, this was just a rough thing that I was asked to put together. I don't know, um, talking, this may not even be, um, legal with, with the way districts are created, so I will find out more on that, but it was just a way for.
Yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm cool with the, the spirit of it, right?
Yeah, well, like anything else, right, it's policy procedures, and last time this was assigned or designed and drafted and put into signature was October fifth, twenty ten. So, we're, we're fourteen years plus, like, almost fourteen years. There are things that need to be updated, right, and, and we keep hearing all these things about this and that and about with all the school district. This is the, really the only way to clarify and clean things up across the board, right? Whether what, whatever side of the line you, you vote for or agree with or against, love or hate the person or vengals of the committee. This is where we, we as a, we as a town, and hopefully Lakeville also does the same thing and adopts their own, right? Um, bylaw change to make this, because they have to be in agreeance as well. That way, we, we, we start fixing, we, we start putting things in the right, in the right order, so that we're not just keep talking about things.
Counsel has come back and tell us otherwise, but part of the issue, I think, is, is do they have to have the same exact wording as we do?
Explain how this works. This is step one, you know, Carlos had asked me to look into this. Step one of, um, changing the regional district agreement is you get, you, you can do it, you can ask the school committee. Which we haven't, so that might be something you might wanna do, or you can go to town meeting and get the majority vote. But you have to tell them the change, you have to tell them, that's why I kind of drafted based on the, the parameters, like this was the proposed change. You draft it, you go, you town meeting, if you get majority vote at town meeting, that's the heat and the air conditioner, then you go. You have to go to the state, you have to send to the state, school secretary or something, they have to approve it. Then it comes back to both towns and then it goes to another town meeting to be approved by both towns. So this is like step one of a very long process, so I don't know. I mean, I didn't know what else the intent was of the changes that you were looking to make on that.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this isn't on, you know, some people are gonna be listening to this meeting and watching this meeting and they're gonna say, ha, the town is trying to do this or that. Well, yeah, in the sense we are, we're trying to, we're trying to go fo- move forward into twenty twenty-four and twenty-five. Doing it the right way, and there are things in here that may not make sense anymore, right? And it's been fourteen years, time for the residents to have their say, right, in, in many ways. Not, it's not for or against, we're, we're not here to pick sides, our job is to policy and procedures of our town, right? We, we, we've, we work better as a team, and right now, the way the agreement is drafted, they pick and choose what team they can, they wanna play with that day. Right, we don't, we, we, we don't have time for that, we, we are busy with all these agendas, I have paperwork everywhere, families at home. Let's, let's get to the point that we're all talking the same language, we're all in agreements, right? This is no, this isn't a gotcha moment, this isn't a, I'm picking on you, this isn't a, I hate you, I love you, this, this none of that. This is policy and procedures and it's time to take a look at it, and let's move it, and like you said, Deb, council's already come back, given us the options, one is ask the school committee. Great, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that, right, that's an easy conversation to have with them, right, and I'm sure they'll have the same questions we have, what are you trying to change? Of course, we're gonna sit down with them and go through it, but council also said, we can go to town meeting and have the town meeting, this is step one of many steps forward, but it starts.
Are you okay with what was drafted as proposed?
There might be some tweaks to that, but it's, in, in general, that's what I'm looking for, I, I wanna know what's coming and going, we wanna know where. We love our kids, we love our district, we, but at, at the same time, we have to make sure we're managing, it's, it's, the school is the biggest funded thing we have in town. Right, it's, it's the biggest draw of the budget, we have to make sure that when we ask our test, taxpayers, our, our residents for ABC dollars. For the children, we have to make sure it goes to the children and to the teachers and to, and to where it needs to go versus it's sitting there collecting dust. Right, in a sense, keep it simple, so, let's get the first step in front of us and see what happens, right, and, and let the residents speak.
All right, sounds good. All right, next article is amend, uh, personal bylaw vacation time.
Yeah, so this is just giving bylaw employees a third week of vacation after, on the, in their third year.
That makes sense, yeah, we did. Uh, next one, amended the personal bylaw, so this is a same, different one though, the first one was. Men personal bylaw vacation time, this one says the same, but it's different.
It might be a repeat, I might need to fix that.
Okay, but I think it's.
I think it's just a duplicate.
Uh, next one, funding the elementary school maintenance stabilization fund, we don't know what that is yet, but we will know.
Right, so that's the fund we set up, again, I know that the, it was set up last time. We have a boiler that's on the horizon, I think Greg Goodwin is looking into giving me some. Um, quotes on the boiler, again, it's all gonna depend on free cash and what that looks like. I do these on all of the town meetings and I sort of, and then if, I leave them sometimes with no dollar figures, and if something gets turned down.
Then you can add it right in.
Then we can try to put it into stabilization.
All right, perfect, so.
No issues with any of these?
I don't have any issues, no, anyone have any issues?
Hold on, we have a couple more in the.
Funding the stabilization fund, which we don't have any dollar.
Yeah, that's, those are always the same.
Three, the three stabilization funds that we. I usually try to put a hundred grand in the, the, um, regular stabilization. Thought processes, maybe put two hundred and fifty in the school stabilization and then the residual would go in the capital stabilization, whatever we have for free cash left over.
Makes sense to me.
Were you saying that we were gonna remove the funding for the union contracts for the water and sewer staff?
Yeah, I, I don't believe we need that separate article, I think it just goes under their prospective union, so like David would go in the highway union, Chandler would go in the.
So I guess, do we just say that, I mean, I don't even know if we need to call it into the vote, because you can just cross that off, we know.
Right, like basically, I just wanna make sure that you're okay with them.
This is like a high level, just like, yeah, okay. Good? So with that, so I'll entertain a motion that, um, to approve the warrant for a special town meeting, uh, on ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then agenda item six, this is just a closed special town meeting warrant. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the special town meeting warrant for ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-four for submission and send to town council and finance committee for review.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll just do some signatures and then we will.
You can do signatures while I do, um, what? You can do signatures while I'm talking about this, are you okay with that?
Absolutely, two birds, one stone.
Let me just do. But you can do the signatures. So this is the grant, it's called Complete Streets, um, it's the grant, it gives about half a million dollars. You can only get it once every four years, the town of Free Town's never gotten one. So this is something that I was working on with Victoria when she got here, she, 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 um, had gotten the grant to do all the studies. This is where we compiled people from the town, said, what are your biggest concerns with traffic and whatnot, and they came up with different projects. There's like a list of nineteen projects. One of the projects was, of course, the Four Corners, and so we have not applied for grant, because we were waiting to do the, use it to do the Four Corners intersection. Right now, that Four Corners is waiting for the road layout to be done. And, um, before we can really move forward with that, and that, you know, that one's a little, um, tricky in terms of. Just making sure we have, get enough information out to the public and that they're aware of a change that might be coming.
Yeah, that's one we don't wanna try and.
Do quickly, no. So in the meantime, I thought, well, maybe we should apply for one of these other grants in the, another project within the Complete Streets. The ones we do it, we won't get another, if we get the grant, we won't be able to apply for another grant for four years. So there's, the, the first decision is, do you, do you wanna just wait and hold out for the, uh, Four Corners intersection? Um, and these grants can go out in October and in May. So if we don't do one now, we could do it in May, if you say, hey, we're not gonna get that Four Corners project done, you, let's do something else. Um, so that's sort of the first, uh, precursory of what to do with the Complete Streets. Then I went through the ones, the grants only up to five hundred thousand, these all have estimates of what it would cost. I'm gonna tell you from my experience of doing a Complete Streets project, that the project will come in thirty or four percent, thirty or forty percent higher than what they're projected in here. So, a five hundred thousand dollar grant is probably only gonna get you one, one of these like two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollar, you don't. So you wanna keep it, so I kind of pulled, there was twenty of them, I pulled out the height, the three million dollars and the five million dollar projects, because we don't wanna do that. I really don't wanna tip into any capital funds for these projects at this point, because we have so many other capital projects going. You know, the fire station and the pods and all those other things. So the one that, and I did review them with Eric from the highway department, I haven't had a chance with Chuck, but you know Chuck's gonna be fine with whatever. He's, 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 um, always fairly accommodating. One that we had talked about is possibly the crosswalks on south, north and south Main Street. Because, you know, like by Dunkin' Donuts, there really isn't a good crosswalk there, and people do try to cross there. Um, one in front of the church, there's, on Sundays, there's a lot of activity there, or the festival, you're gonna see, um, the crosswalks. And there's about four crosswalks on that street that could be upgraded to ADA. And, um, make, made safer. I know that Selectman Loeb's is very, um, wants to work on a piece of the sidewalk, that's already been approved. We used opera funds where we haven't gotten a study back from GPI, but we could kind of tie these two together. I can't use Complete Streets grant funding for that piece of sidewalk, because it wasn't identified in the original project. But we could bid it together if we had the funding for it when we were doing the grant stuff. So that's one, the, um, the South Main Street sidewalk connection, and that's not the project, I was just trying to find the project.
I remember I was talking about this in the past too, and this one makes a lot of sense.
The, there's, the, um, crosswalks on South Main Street, yeah, oh, here it is. And there, it's a hundred, it's projected to cross a hundred and seventy-six thousand, so it was probably cost three hundred and fifty, but the grant's up to five hundred. So it, it, it shouldn't tap into town funds, and there's no match on this.
And if, he, here's a silly question, costs us three hundred fifty thousand dollars, we've been given five hundred, can we use that hundred and fifty now?
They won't give you extra, you, it's a reimbursement, so you only get what you spend up to.
No, but I guess can, I meant, could we use it on, say all of a sudden, something comes up out of one of these other projects and we say we have to do it. We have that hundred and fifty thousand dollars left, could we use it?
You could use it in the four years, like, we could apply, so say we use three fifty on this, the next year, we could take the hundred fifty we have left and apply, say, for the ADA grant. So you can use it, it's just a whole nother application, does that make sense? You can't just say like, hey, I didn't spend all my money, can you just give it to me and I'll let you know?
No, no, yeah, no, I knew it would have to be used on this stuff, but I didn't know if we would be able to, if it was like a one and done.
You get like five hundred thousand every four years, so if we only spent two hundred on this, we still have three hundred to spend on a different project. So that is one of the ones that, like, Eric and I identify that might be cost-effective, a good project to do for safety. I was really looking for something in East Free Town, but they were all very, um, expensive in terms of, you know, million dollars. The only other one that, you know, there's one for ADA pedestrian curb ramp upgrades for the entire town, so every. Um, on ramp, you know, sidewalk, uh, crosswalk, um, ramp could be upgraded and that's slated at a hundred and fifty thousand. I wanna say there's thirty-three ramps across town properties that.
So, so there you go, we talk about those two, you might be able to get those two done for.
I might be able to do them together, and they would tie together, because they're all about.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, that's what makes sense to me, you just.
So, do you want to move forward with the grant application and knowing that, like I said, we might not, like, we'd have to wait four years to do the four, the four-way intersection?
I, I think that makes sense.
Which, we're not gonna be able to do for five hundred thousand, right? We're gonna need additional money to do that project, which is another reason why I'm like, oh, right now, with all the stuff we get going on.
I think we go for these two sidewalk ones.
I'm good with it.
All right, so should we vote on that?
You have to vote on that.
Yep, so, I'll, I'll entertain a motion that, um, we move forward with the, I guess, project ten and project three of the Complete Streets propos- proposals.
For grant applications.
Yeah, for grant applications.
Uh, motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, all right, thank you, everybody, have a great night, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?